September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Please rise for the pledge. Next on the agenda is number three, an invitation for a citizen to schedule a time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. There's a five-minute time limit per person. Anybody wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during the agenda item. Any requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting date. We have nobody signed up. So we'll move on to number four, approval of agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, any changes?
We do have to add to the exec session SDCL one twenty-five-two-three consulting with legal counsel.
All right. Any discussion or changes, any more further? Hearing none, all in favor of the proposed agenda? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter five is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes, travel and education requests, personnel action notices, cellular authorization, human services report. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion on the consent agenda items. Comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Posler?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number six, routine business, letter A, approval of claims. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval. Second.
Discussion, comments on the claims. Any discussion, comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Posler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, letter B, department head reports. Brian, you want to get us started off?
Good morning.
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 Little update, south of town, we have a progress meeting on South Main this morning at ten. They are completely done with the utility installs and meeting today to figure out what the status is for the grading and the road work that's remaining. And keep you guys up to date when that's getting nearing the end because winter's coming. County Road thirty-eight, the paving was completed on September eighth. Guard rail was completed on September eleventh. And county crews worked on the shoulders, approaches, and intersections last week and looking at striping tomorrow. The crews have been graveling now again. And that project's wrapped up, so that's nice to have done. As far as Thirty-Fourth Avenue, I'm going to be attending another progress meeting on that, so hopefully that's coming towards getting completed maybe a little easier to get around town here, hopefully by October. Aside from that, they did pour the footing walls for the Bruce shop yesterday, so that'd be moving along here pretty quick, too.
All right, questions for Brian? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff? All right. Lori? Okay. Bob?
Good morning.
Good morning.
September seventh, we had a chemical spill. I was out sick that morning and Richard responded. The, Richard was working with D A and R and Office of Emergency Management to take care of that. That was a county vehicle that was involved, so they made sure all the paperwork was done correctly. September fourteenth, my PPCC pod meeting was canceled because on September twelfth, I was at the SDACC conference in Sioux Falls. And then the thirteenth and fourteenth, I went out to Deadwood to the South Dakota Emergency Management Association Conference. And apparently half, three-fourths of my pod leadership wasn't going to be there, so they requested that we cancel it, so we went ahead and canceled it. And, well, so I, yesterday, September eighteenth, we had a flood risk meeting. FEMA came in. This was actually set up last week while we was in Sioux Falls and Deadwood. And it went well, they had from between forty and fifty people there, two city council members, the mayor, two county commissioners, and a lot of the public. We interfaced, me and Richard, interface with two county citizens that were on the list and made sure they talked to FEMA and got what answers FEMA could give them at the time. And last but not least, yesterday was the deadline for a pod, points of dispensing grant to be submitted. I didn't have time to request permission from the commission. The grant closed at five o'clock yesterday for up to three thousand dollars for support of a pod, support of a pod manager to oversee pod activities. I did prepare a grant application. It had been requested up to three thousand dollars, which was the biggest amount they'd give you. So if the commission doesn't, didn't want me to do that, let me know and I can withdraw the grant. But I went ahead and, I went ahead and submitted it and figured I better do it instead of losing, losing a chance. No guarantee, but hopefully we'll get the money. And some of that money is in November, we've got a pod class down in Vermillion that Officer Emergency Manager is putting on. And right now, I've got four of my pod members going down to that class, and I'd like to use part of that grant to reimburse like the hotels and travel, stuff like that. We also use the money for to supplement what the county, the county gives me a thousand dollars a year for pod, PPCC usage, and this money would supplement that and allow us to do more than what, what our budget amount is. So, and I'll work with the finance director to make sure all, she has all the application paperwork and everything, so we meet state law. Any questions? Thank you.
Hold on a second, hold, I think you missed something in your report.
Uh, no.
In Deadwood, the South Dakota Emergency Management Association awarded Bob Hill twenty-twenty-three Emergency Manager of the Year.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. And that was, that was earned mainly because of the people I work with in the county and my committees that you guys have appointed for me, so, but thank you.
Congratulations. Well deserved. All right, letter C is finance officers' report. Letter I is action appropriations. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, comments. Lori, anything? Okay. Please call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Posler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And just to be there, letter A is from the general fund one zero one dash four dash nine one one dash four two nine four, Highway Bridge Fund, two zero four three zero three seven one dash zero 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 zero, and the amount of four hundred sixty-four thousand three eighty-four point five, or fifty cents, excuse me. Letter B is from the general fund one zero one dash four dash nine nine dash four two nine zero to the emergency management fund, which is two two six dash three dash three seven one dash zero 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 zero, and the amount of forty thousand eight thirty-three fifty. Also, we have some be it noted items for the minutes. Letter A is action, auditor's account for the treasurer. B is payroll and additive totals. Letter C is highway expenditure report. And letter D is register of deeds, statement of fees collected. These are be it noted items for the minutes. All right, we will move on to regular business. We do have a scheduled public hearing at nine, but we'll move on to regular business until then. Letter A, first reading of ordinance twenty-three dash zero one, an ordinance for the amendment of ordinance twenty fifteen dash zero three, which re-adopted the nineteen ninety-seven revised zoning ordinance as amended. Article four, chapter four point zero two, commercial slash industrial districts, section four point zero two point zero one permitted uses, and section four point zero two zero two conditional uses adopted by ordinance twenty eighteen dash three. This is a first reading, title only, note of the date of this time will be, second reading will be October tenth at nine AM. October tenth at nine AM for the second reading. All right, number B, action to approve resolution twenty-three dash thirty-eight, a plat of lots one A and two A of Highland addition in the government lot A of section twenty-eight, township one oh nine north, range fifty west, the fifth principal Meridian, Brookings, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Second. Discussion, comments?
Yes, sir, we heard this in our regularly scheduled September zoning meeting. Commission unanimously and sent to this board with a recommendation that you approve it.
Any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter C, under regular business, is an action to approve resolution twenty-three dash thirty-nine, a plat of lots thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, Cedar Point addition in government lot three of the northwest quarter of section twenty-eight, township one oh nine north, range fifty west of the fifth principal Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Same thing, sir, we heard it in our September planning meeting, sent, passed unanimously and sent to this board with a recommendation that you approve it.
Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Posler?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Letter D, action to approve resolution twenty-three dash forty, a resolution amending resolution twenty-two dash sixty-seven, a resolution setting the official pay plan for twenty-twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
So this is kind of, kind of twofold action. This first is amending the pay plan resolution that was passed December of last year. There's a request from the sheriff's office to do some changes with correctional officers, eliminating some part-time positions, I believe, going from fourteen positions down to six positions. Correctional officers actually full-time would stay the same, but then we would create four new shift leader corporal correctional officer positions within the detention center. That request coming from the sheriff's office and detention center group. This is kind of the first action to amend that pay plan, and then the next is the addendum that you'll see for the sheriff's union contract to allow for this.
All right, comments, discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Posler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter I, action to approve an addendum to the Teamsters Local One Twenty Collective Bargaining Agreement, agreement number twenty-two dash fifty-two, the sheriff's union contract. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, comments?
And again, this then is that addendum to the contract, the union contract to allow for the creation of these positions and to these four, these four shift lead corporal positions, that kind of spells that out a little more in detail.
Any discussion, further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Posler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter E, action to approve resolution twenty-three dash forty-one, a resolution to continue support for the first district association of local governments during the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, which is October first of twenty twenty-three through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval. Second.
Discussion, comments?
This is just authorizing, basically, to pay the dues and be part of that first district group again. The dollar amount for the dues is in the twenty twenty-four budget.
All right, any further discussion, comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Posler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter F, action to approve resolution twenty-three dash forty-two, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a twenty twenty-three John Deere seven forty-four P based upon the price established through the state of Minnesota bid process. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion, comments? Brian?
Uh, this is for a loader that was approved for purchase earlier this year. I'm just cleaning it up to make sure that it is acknowledged that we're buying this off the Minnesota state bid.
Okay. Further comments, discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
No.
Posler?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, letter G, an action to approve agreement twenty-three dash fifty, an application for occupancy of right-of-way county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy in Eureka Township. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. Discussion, comments?
This will be a new three-phase electric overhead by Sioux Valley, basically north on seventy-seven to the county line, about six miles.
You're okay with it?
Yep. And it was reviewed quite, it was scrutinized quite heavily.
Yeah. All right, any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter H is an action to approve agreement twenty-three dash fifty-one, an applicant, an application for occupancy of right-of-way in county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy in Sterling Township. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second. Discussion, comments?
This is a three-phase underground to a bin site at a farm place along County Road six by Bruce.
Okay. All right, any comments or further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter I, action to approve agreement twenty-three dash fifty-two, an agreement for voluntary right-of-way donation between Brookings County and Lynn Hartenhoff. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Comments, discussion?
This is structure number zero six, two eighty-one, seventy-two, three point eight north and four west of Elkton on Forty-Second Avenue. We got, received a grant, was awarded in two thousand and twenty-one, and this is just a right-of-way, or voluntary right-of-way donation so we can have permanent and construction easements.
All right. Comments, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter J, action to approve agreement twenty-three dash fifty-three, an agreement for voluntary right-of-way donation between Brookings County and Hartenhoff Land Trust. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Discussion, comments? All right, same thing. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter K, an action to approve agreement twenty-three dash fifty-four, an agreement between Brookings County and Catalyst Payments to provide credit card services for Brookings County. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
This agreement will bring some updates and improvements to the payment options we currently have in the finance office. We'll be able to provide the customers with a lower rate of interest than they experience now. They'll still have debit card, credit card options. They can now, or will be able to pay with e-check, ACH, with phone, text, or email to the company, and they'll also be able to make payments through the company. But the county will get their full payment upfront, so it's a good deal for the customers and the county in that way. They can set up reminders to be sent to them on their phone. I've been working with them to customize the options and site process so that it's easily accessible and to be able to be user-friendly for our customers. It looks like it's going to be a good change. We currently use this company in conjunction with Tyler Technology for our big mass escrows from banks that come in, so it's going to fit with our Tyler software well and integrate. So I think it's going to be a good thing. I've also added in a miscellaneous area where perhaps Dan can access it and use it for payments on his welfare, too. So it, it will be used by more than just our office, so.
Comments, further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Posler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter L, action to authorize the chairperson to sign the acknowledgement and certification required by executive order twenty twenty-three dash thirteen for the South Dakota Department of Transportation. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, comments?
This is a request from South Dakota Department of Transportation, dealing with conflicts of interest. Governor Gnome did approve executive order twenty twenty-three thirteen, dealing with those things, and so the county is considered a contractor with the state. So then they, DOT wants the counties to sign off on this.
All right, any discussion, further discussion, comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter M is an action to approve Community Development Housing Needs Assessment Plan for Brookings County as part of the Community Development Block Grant Application Submission. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, discussion?
It's just basically part of our application process. We had to have a housing needs assessment plan. We basically had invested in the plan that the city had put forward, so we sent that information on with the community development block grant.
All right, does this cost us anything?
No. We already paid for that assessment.
Okay.
A couple of years ago.
Gotcha. Didn't know if there's, it had to be a reassessment or anything like that. It's good news. Okay. All right, any further discussion, comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter N, action to approve a request for the Fire Department Long-Term Fund for eighteen thousand dollars to Hendrick's Fire Department for a fire truck chassis. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Comments, discussion?
This is a request from the Hendrick's Fire Department for use of some of their long-term funds. As you know, you know, when there's, there's budget left over at the end of the year, in the general fund fire line, then that all rolls into this long-term fund, and then that's divided up amongst all of the fire departments that have coverage in Brookings County. They can spend that, save that, so Hendrick's Fire Department has, has built that up, and they do have this eighteen thousand to spend on this, on this chassis.
All right. Further discussion, comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Posler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter O is an action to approve request to fill vacancy for a full-time male correctional officer in the detention center. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Comments, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Close, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we've got about six, seven minutes here. Commissioner?
Director's report?
So the August VSO, Veteran Service Officer numbers are there, one hundred and thirty-three V S O V R V van rides. August is busy, August and September are busy with training seminars for our veteran service staff. So they did a train, attend a couple of training seminars in August, and then three outreach events were held. The August general fund surplus is at thirty-two percent, which is still above the twenty-one point four percent ten-year average, and we continue to track that through the end of the year. And, you know, and if we have to be below that forty percent at year end, so we'll continue to watch that here as we get closer to year end. Bob actually had the Bruce Fire Chief, Richard Stokes, reach out to him last week, I believe, and ta, discuss a generator for the Bruce Fire Hall. They have an old nineteen sixty-eight model generator that's not the most reliable. They've been raising, they have raised approximately seven thousand dollars already towards a new one for the Fire Hall. The estimated cost for that is about thirty-two thousand. Wondering if that's something that the commission would be interested in using commission projects funds for? If so, or if you would like, I could have, you know, invite Chief Stokes to come in and visit about that, or, or if, if not, we could just direct, if that's something that the commission is, sees as a fit for commission projects funding, we can just move in that direction, too. Thoughts on that?
Is this generator solely used for the fire department?
I believe it is, but it also powers like the severe warning siren. He says when the generator goes down, the siren goes down if they lose power.
Do we want some type of a formal request? I mean, kind of, this is the discussion, should we put it on?
I mean, if, if you want some formal discussion, we could invite, you know, them here, him here, to have that with you. I guess that's up in looking for some direction, how the board would like to handle it.
And I think we've kind of done that with all the other ones, too. I think we need to probably stay consistent with that. So maybe we can, unless the time is of the essence or something like that, or is it part of the discussion, Bob, was looking at doing it in the near?
Well, probably in the near future, but they're, they are concerned that.
Right, but if we wait, if we wait a cou, another, till the next meeting and have him stop in or, or something, or get a formal request?
Yeah.
Be okay?
I think that would work.
Okay.
So what the request about is I'm looking at it, if they've raised seven thousand, and cost is thirty-two, the request is about twenty-five thousand.
That's the way I understand it.
Bob, do you know, is this a permanent, or is this portable?
This would be a permanent one for the building. Set, set right outside the building, on a pad, I would imagine.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be good to get a formal request, so if you can reach out to him and we can get him on next month's, or next meeting's agenda, we'll be able to probably answer some of those questions too, and exactly how much he's asking for, so.
Thank you.
Okay, and then a couple other things that have come up, um, I'm looking for consensus uh, just a smaller courthouse security grant, um, as you know, we did the very large project with the cameras, um, and the, uh, the door strikes and some things over there. Um, this one, as we were, they actually had a security assessment come through a couple of weeks ago, and we noticed we missed a camera on the south, uh, southeast corner of the, of southeast, southwest corner of the courthouse, so I would like to apply for a grant. I mean, the total is about four thousand dollars, but then we'd only have to pay for, if approved, about seventy-five percent of that, so. If you're okay with that, I'll move forward in that direction. Okay? Um, an update on the rural access infrastructure, uh, we had just five townships, I believe, submitted five-year plans by the end of August. So I'll be working, um, with those five townships to get the remainder of their paperwork now in, um, by the end of October, that's the next deadline. We did receive a invitation for the Hobo Day Parade, it's October fourteenth. Um, they're asking again if, if you as a commission want to participate in the parade. If so, I will RSVP, uh, that way and get that moving forward, are you interested in doing that as a group?
I have a wed, I have a wedding that day in Aberdeen, so I won't be able to
Okay.
And I, I will be out of town that weekend.
Yeah, me as well.
Okay. Larry and Mike?
Larry and I ride my truck, if it'd be done, I, I, we're down to just two of us, uh, we don't have any elections this year, maybe we, we skip a year.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Okay.
We'll let you know.
Okay, I need to What's their deadline? October first? Is their deadline? The committee, so.
You see, I did call that number and told them I regretfully wouldn't be able to make it.
Oh, okay. Um, we did get an invitation from Banner, uh, Banner Associates for their client appreciation on September thirtieth as part of the, um, NDSU SDSU game, that's just a tailgating event, uh, starting at, uh, ten o'clock tailgating, and then they're doing a hog roast at noon. So, again, that's September thirtieth, and I think we're pretty much close to nine o'clock, um, I don't think I have anything else, other than the dates that you see there in front of you, so.
All right, any questions? All right, uh, number seven is a nine o'clock public hearing, and it is nine o'clock, so we'll get started. Letter A is a public hearing in action to approve a special events license for J and A Dietrich LLC, doing business as J Street Pub in the event, for an event at Bennett Barn on September twenty, or excuse me, September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Is there an action to approve?
Motion approved.
Second? All right, we'll open the meeting, uh, for a public hearing. All proponents, please come forward, all proponents.
Hi, Andrea Dietrich, um, owner of, uh, J Street Pub, so this last weekend, it went really well, so having another one in two weeks.
All right, thank you. Comments, discussion, any further proponents? Further proponents? Are there any opponents? For the public hearing, any opponents? All right, we'll close the public hearing and open it for comments or discussion. Comments or discussion, Sheriff, any comments?
Nope.
All right. Comments, discussion, hearing none, please call the roll.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, letter B is public hearing and approval of FY twenty-twenty-four annual budget. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second? Second, okay, we'll open the public meeting. Are there any proponents? Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Any opponents in the public hearing? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and open for comments and discussion.
So the first thing that you're, um, the motion to approve is for the amendments to the provisional budget, which, um, as you recall, we approved back at the, at the last meeting, two weeks ago. These do have to be, um, read into the minutes, so the, for current property tax, this is a tax amount change for utility, due to utilities and growth, um, Department General Fund three-eleven. It went from fourteen million, four hundred seventy-eight thousand, five hundred seventeen dollars to fourteen million, four hundred seventy-seven thousand, five hundred forty-eight dollars, which was a decrease, uh, in revenue of nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Um, we're going to offset that with, uh, detention center salaries, one oh one four two twelve four one one zero. Um, that went from one million, nine hundred, four thousand, six hundred eight dollars to one million, nine hundred, three dollars, six hu, uh, one million, nine hundred, three thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. And then the other thing to offset that, uh, is miscellaneous revenue, one oh one three three six nine zero 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 zero. Um, went from five hundred, twelve thousand, seven sixty-nine to five hundred, twelve thousand, seven nineteen, just a fifty-dollar, uh, change there. And then the other thing that changes with all of that is the less five percent. Um, South Dakota codified law says we have to have, set aside five percent in our general fund. So that went from nine hundred, uh, twenty thousand, seven hundred and three to nine twenty-six fifty-two. So the total changes was one thousand um, both revenue and expense offset themselves, and that's in, just all in the general fund. And then in the building fund, current property tax levy, again, we had some changes due to the utilities, uh, amount. Three oh one, three eleven, went from three hundred seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and two dollars to three hundred seventy-three thousand, eight seventy-seven. Just a twenty-five dollar change there, um, we're offsetting that with, uh, three oh one, four, one six one, four two nine five courthouse building line in, um, that should say, actually, three oh one, I'll have to make that change, um, three oh one, one six one, not three oh four. Um, two, from two hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine twelve to two hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight eighty-seven. Um, and then, again, miscellaneous revenue, three oh one, three, three six one, zero 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 zero. And again, the, that should be three oh one, three six one, so I'll make that change. From thirty-five thousand to thirty-four thousand, nine ninety-eight, just a two dollar change there, and again, this is the other fund that requires that less five percent savings per statute. So, uh, twenty-one thousand, two ninety-three to twenty-one, two ninety-one. So the, the total change in the, uh, building fund, three oh one, was just twenty-seven dollars. Um, and then, kind of highlighted there, two in red in the three oh one county building fund on the provisional ballot, uh, budget document, miscellaneous revenue was accidentally, accidentally put in the wrong line on that very long spreadsheet. It was in fines and forfeits, so I wanted to make sure that that was noted as a correct, uh, corrected for the annual budget as well, that it got placed in the correct line. And then the other thing that changed were the levies, uh, in general fund, it went from three point seven four five to three point seven seven four, for a change of point oh two nine. Um, county building, um, there was no change there. Jail expansion levy, um, went from point one three one to point one three three, so for just a point zero zero two change there. Total levy, um, went from three point nine seven three in the provisional budget to four point zero zero four, so just over four dollars. Um, uh, total for the county levy, which was a change of point zero three one. That is, um, still down, that levy is still down from twenty-twenty-three's levy of four point one five seven.
All right, comments, discussion? On the amendments to the provisional budget? Do you want to do anything, summarize the final budget, or?
Um, that can be done next, because we have to do the resolution next, too, so.
Okay. All right, any other comments, questions on the amendments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, uh, number two, or letter two there, action to approve Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-seven, adoption of the FY twenty-twenty-four annual budget for Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second? Comments, discussion?
So as I noted, as you, as I noted earlier, um, the total levy for across all, um, funds for property taxes, that total dollar amount next year will total fifteen million, three fifty-nine, seven twenty-five. Um, and that total levy, again, four point zero zero four, so just over four dollars, which is down from the twenty-twenty-three levy. Um, this document, the highlights show things that were changed between the provisional budget and the annual budget. Um, as you can see, there's kind of this line here, down at the bottom, all funds, um, again, are balanced. Uh, the only reserves that are being used in twenty-twenty-three, again, is in the Register of Deeds Relief Fund. Um, that is fine, those, those funds in, uh, there are specific to Register of Deeds functions, so she's just spending down some of that cash to use for things that she has to use that money for. Um, other than that, I don't think there was any, um, big, big, uh, really big, big changes. I mean, we've been kind of working on this, going through this process since, since June, so, um, I'm, I'm happy with the budget and presenting you a, a balanced budget for twenty-twenty-four.
All right, comments, discussion?
I just would like to thank the staff and Stacy for all the work they do on this, it's, it's a challenge every year to come up with a balanced budget. It's a challenge for us to keep the levy, uh, even or lower, preferably, so I think we've done a great job, and you all have done a good job.
Any further comments, discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Ends our public hearings, we go back to State's Attorney's Office Report. Yep. Move on to Commissioner Reports and discussion items, first, Commissioner Vanderwall.
Thank you, on, uh, September seventh, I attended, along with Commissioner Jensen, the two fourteen, uh, meeting with Banner. Uh, it's moving, it's not moving along as fast as we'd all like to see, but it's moving. On September eleventh, I attended a special county uh, September twelfth and thirteenth last week, attended the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners meetings in Sioux Falls. I, I really learned a lot, and I thank, uh, for the opportunity to attend, thank you.
All right, Mr. Bartley.
All right, up we had a joint meeting with the city, uh, planning, the jur, jurisdiction board, we approved two different, uh, requests. Uh, also after that, we had the county planning commission, and as you approved the rest of those today, the plats and the changes. On the sixth, Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness, had a, we had a construction meeting to review some, uh, applications for construction manager at-risk, uh, forms. Narrowed that down to, to two people, which we interviewed, uh, again on the thirteenth. Uh, seventh, I did, uh, attend a first district golf mixer, met some new employees and had a good time. Uh, the eleventh, I attended the exec session we had in the morning, the thirteenth was the Ivy Center CMR interviews, which, uh, took us about three hours, but we ended up, uh, selecting a, uh, CMR to, to go into negotiations with. On the eighteenth, last night, the BDC had a board meeting, at which time we approved that, uh, that selection from the building committee, and, uh, had some reports on financing and other exciting things going on with behavioral health. Uh, we're moving forward with the plan, the, the Community Development Black Grant is just about complete, should be submitted either tomorrow or on Thursday to the state. Uh, we've got some nice letters of support to put into the, uh, application, so we think we've got everything we need to have for that application from the county. Probably won't find any, out anything, uh, until December, possibly, and the award would be in December or January, so, uh, keep your fingers crossed if you know anybody that you, uh, uh, can talk to or visit with. To make those decisions, please do so, that's our application, that's my report.
On the sixth, I met with a couple city officials in Aurora, uh, discussed some, uh, road closures and detours that they're proposing for their sewer project next year. It's still moving forward, and a little discussion on two hundred and fourteenth, also with, uh, Aurora. On the seventh, met with, uh, banners, uh, as well as Commissioner Vanderwall on our feasibility study, it's, like Kelly said, it is moving along. They hope to have, uh, report to us, I believe, the end of November, first of December. Um, they will bring, uh, uh, recommendations and some concerns they have with, uh, within that area. On, uh, last night, I did attend the FEMA floodplain meeting, um, and, uh, it was, uh, when I was here, there was quite a few landowners here, uh, and, uh, I guess it's landlords that are affected by the new floodplain map, and, uh, having, uh, a certain amount of time to appeal the process, uh, or the map, uh, will come forth, uh, when they, uh, present the map, I guess, is that correct, Bob? That's, that's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Hostler?
So on the sixth, after our meeting, uh, Stacy and I attended a courthouse meeting with courthouse staff over there. On the seventh, I had a public affairs meeting with the chamber. On the eleventh, attended the special commission meeting here in the chambers, and then on the twelfth and thirteenth, attended the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, uh, annual convention, uh, as Commissioner Vanderwall said, it was very, uh, it was very educational, I took a lot back. That's my report.
Sounds good. I had, I attended the special meeting again on the eleventh, and then on the that's all I have. So, nothing else, we'll move on to number twelve, executive session in accordance to South Dakota codified law, one dash two five dash two, numbers one and three, for personnel and consulting with legal counsel. Is there a motion to enter into executive session? Comments, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. We have no other items on the agenda after executive sessions, so when we come out, we will adjourn.